Order the June 21, 2021 meeting of the Statesville City Council. Ask you to rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Heavenly Father, first and foremost, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. I pray that you will grant wisdom and guidance to our mayor and council as they make decisions for our community. Please help them to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered and presented by our city staff. I ask that you allow them to come together as a group in your name to find common ground and make sound decisions. It is in your holy name that I pray. Amen.
Do the flag of the United States of America.
Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please be seated. We've moved some things around and we've taken care of some things, and we're going to add some things. So let me go through that and see if we can adopt the agenda. Items B and C on the consent agenda by motion during the pre-agenda meeting have been postponed until July the 19th. The owners of each of those properties have begun work on doing their own demolition, so we encourage that. So they're moving forward. Item H is removed from the consent agenda. And item 14 from the regular agenda has been moved to the consent agenda. I should have mentioned this during the pre-agenda, but I believe we should consider 12 before we consider 11 because the update on the flat rate is part of the budget, so we should do that first. And then we're going to add to the regular agenda a discussion of the upcoming city municipal elections based on some legislation that has been passed by both houses of the state legislature. I think that covers it. With those changes, is there a motion that we adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item five is our code of ethics, which we include in our packets every meeting to remind us of our obligations to ourselves and to the community. We do have one presentation tonight, and that's for National Parks and Recreation Month, and I'm going to go to the podium and read the proclamation, and then we'll invite folks from our recreation and park staff who are here to come forward and receive the proclamation. As I said, this is a proclamation of Parks and Recreation Month, July 2021. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, especially in states of North Carolina, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the city of Statesville recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved by the Statesville City Council that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Statesville.
I'd like to say a few words.
We do have Mark Wilkinson, Teresa Henry, and Eric Higgins. Mark Wilkinson's the fitness director over at the Fitness and Activity Center. Eric's the center director over at the Bentley Community Center, and Teresa is the assistant director over at the Bentley Community Center. This is three of our 32 full-time staff that, I mean, do just everything under the sun. We run community centers, recreation centers, splash pads, swimming pools, athletic leagues, city and community events, maintain parks, public grounds, cemeteries, buildings, greenways, everything in between. So it's a, we got a really great staff that works really hard to improve the quality of life here in Statesville. So thank you.
Thank you all very much. We, at the second meeting of each month, or at the only meeting in those months where we have one meeting, we have a public comment period, and this is when members of the community can come and speak about any topic, as long as the conversation doesn't disparage or malign any other person. We're open to hearing about anything. We don't usually comment on the presentations, but we, if they require some action by the staff or the city council, we'll, we take those up at a later point. Three folks, and do we, we have a timer, April, or no, no timer? You're the timer. Lee is the timer. First speaker is David Mays, 1576 Dogwood Lane.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is David Mays, 1576 Dogwood Lane. I'd like to speak a little bit on a hot topic in this city, that it's $120 per year sanitation tax, solid waste fee. Understand that tonight, we're looking at moving it from the tax bill to the utility bill. That's good, it's coming out. If it does come off the bill, that would save the taxpayers a lot of money who is struggling to even pay their property taxes that are in the risk of getting foreclosed, or that may, $120 can make a big difference. Other thing, if you put it on a utility bill, all you're doing is hiding it from the city of state, city of citizens, I mean, city of Statesville citizens. By putting it on a utility bill, you're just doing more and more $10 of struggle that people are struggling to pay their taxes in the areas that they have low economical times and stuff right now during the pandemic. Also, I'd like to ask that if the council, if any council member would like, I would think the city of Statesville citizens would love a re-motion on eliminating this altogether, because I think that we need to look at either getting rid of it or going with this 3%, 3% adding on to the property tax because you already doing the 3% on, I mean, the 20 cent on the water to make it self-sufficient. 3 cents not gonna hurt it. Our brother paid 3% and saved the money by us paying the $120. Also, if we don't do something about this $120 sanitation tax, I mean, fee, you're going to start seeing Benfield Sanitation sneaking into the city, which you're already doing. You're going to see city residents put it, taking their trash cans back to the city, and Benfield's going to take the city business away from us. So another thing I would like to ask, if we're not going to do away with the $120, which all the current council members have harked on it when they ran for office, that we would do away with it. If not, let's look at reducing the $120 to maybe equal to what a trash can at Benfield Sanitation costs is to rent that thing, and save the city sanitation jobs. Because if we don't, Benfield Sanitation will take it over. And I appreciate your time, and I hope we can get some resolution on this $120. This has been a thing that's been going on for years. Current city council members in around, we're going to get rid of it. We're going to get rid of it. It ain't happening yet. Please do it.
Thank you, sir. The second speaker is John Campbell, 123 West Water Street.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak this evening. In August, I purchased Beaver Lock and Key, 123 West Water Street, which is right beside of the parking lot, corner of Meeting and West Water. In September, Ms. Sandra Hager was tragically and horrifically killed on the sidewalk by a driver that probably shouldn't have been driving in the first place. Nobody will argue that that was horrible. Fast forward to March, I purchased the entire building between the parking lot and Landmark Alley, and a little lot on the other side of the alley. A few weeks later, I was contacted by Mr. Mark Taylor informing me that the city wanted to close the entrance to that parking lot from West Water Street, which is the most used entrance and exit of the parking lot. He also said that the city wanted to put bollards or metal posts in between the curb and the sidewalk all the way down, which I think is a great step for safety, safety being for the people waiting in line at the DMV. Since COVID, they can't have more than four people inside. And I don't know if that's a state thing or the contractor's decision, but I think the city needs to rethink closing that entrance completely. I'm not sure if that portion was done through council action or if it came through staff, but it's going to have a lot of unintended consequences, and I just want to be sure the city has thoroughly thought through the long-term and lasting effects of that. And in addition, the problems are going to be moved. They're not going to go away. People go way too fast on the west end down to Water Street as it is. Steps need to be taken to slow that traffic first. Stoplight, stop sign, speed bumps, all those things could do that. You could also consider, instead of closing it altogether, make it to where you can only turn right into and right out of the parking lot, which would eliminate the left turn, which is where a lot of the issues, I think, come from. The other thing it's going to do is put more traffic on the alleys, in addition to create mass confusion, because that's how most people go, is they come right up Water Street. If you have to go up and over and around and back down into the alley, you're putting the traffic, you're putting more traffic on that Y intersection, which is already dangerous. You're also putting more traffic on the alleys, which is dangerous because they're not as wide. You can't see, when you turn left out of Tunksis Alley onto Meeting Street, if there's a vehicle parked right there, you can't see until you're halfway out. So you're going to have more accidents there. You're also going to increase the traffic on Landmark Alley, even if the signage directs people because people take the shortcut, that's what they do. Landmark Alley is barely wide enough as it is. My understanding is it is a privately owned public access, so the city doesn't even have control over that. It'd have to be a coalition of property owners that, whose property is adjacent to that. So I'm just asking to reconsider, because if traffic on the alley goes up, it's going to be hard for my tenants, clients, who are, a lot of them are old. There's a hair salon and a nail salon. There's an apartment, and there's a counselor's office. And people crossing from that gravel lot over the alley to them, it's going to be dangerous for them, and it's also going to be dangerous for the restaurant and their employees.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And the final speaker during the public comment period is Darby Scaff, 110 West Allison Street.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, city councilmen and women. Ms. Fugiet, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having us today. I'm here to represent the Statesville Housing Authority. As you're aware, the housing authority provides up to 1,441 units subsidized in the city of Statesville. Of those, we also have 5,803 people that are currently on the waitlist. What I'm trying to say today is that this city has about 38% right now that are below the 30% median income, and additional 20% are below the 50% median income. Statesville currently is calculating for the housing authority, the raise in the solid fee will be for public housing residents, close to $99,000 a year, and for sectioned residents of those in the city, up to $35,000 a year. 58% of renters have direct impact on what's going to happen. And those renters are still behind on the rents and on the utilities. This is a hardship. We must understand that we are responsible for those in those disenfranchised communities. We are responsible for those people, the firefighters, the nurses, the community college people that live below the 50% income. We should also be concerned about those citizens, the disability, the disabled folks, the senior citizens, the veterans. $10.25 can be the difference between someone getting a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom. $10.25 can be the difference between a senior citizen receiving $25 food stamps or $45 food stamps. It might seem like petty dollars to us, but it's in fact a tremendous burden on those that we are here to serve. Ladies and gentlemen, 63% of Statesville live at or below the poverty range. 63%. Please, city council, have some consideration of what this impact is going to have this year, especially since we just came from COVID. About 20% of people still have not collected back rents or are still behind in some form of utility. Let us not allow our citizens to choose between having electricity or buying medicine. Let us not allow our citizens to choose between food and air conditioning. This is not a choice that we need to make today. I'm asking you, council, please make the decisions that are going to impact the majority of your population, the majority of the people that we are here to serve. I thank you for your consideration, and I hope that you made a decision to affect the people that are in dire need right now. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you all. We encourage folks to come and speak during the public comment period. I appreciate the comments that each of you made tonight. Our consent agenda is, includes things that the council considers to be routine, and this will be, they will be enacted with one motion. If any member of the council would like to have any of these items removed, then we'll remove them and consider them on the regular agenda. Item A is to approve the minutes of April 28 called meeting and May 10 council budget meeting. As I mentioned earlier, B and C have already been postponed to July the 19th. D is to consider passing a resolution directing the city clerk to investigate a petition of annexation, to receive the city clerk's certificate of sufficiency, and consider passing a resolution fixing the date of July the 19th, 2021, for a public hearing for the petition for annexation. And this is 95 acres adjacent to the old Statesville subdivision. This is for a new proposed residential subdivision. It's case AX 21-04. Item E is to consider passing a resolution of intent to permanently close an unopened dedicated right-of-way known as Touchberry Lane in the Deer Creek subdivision. Item F is to consider approving a five-year hangar lease with Velocity One Aviation to rent the former Rubbermaid Hangar at a monthly rate of $16,797.55. This is at a rate above what we last received for the hangar. They will be required to have a minimum of $5 million worth of aircraft in the hangar, and also will have a CPI increase in the rent after three years. Item G is to consider approving a resolution supporting the closure of a portion of Old Airport Road and signing a right-of-way abandonment petition as the sole landowner within the closure portion of Old Airport Road per NCDOT requirements, and requesting NCDOT to assume ownership and maintenance of the new portion of Old Airport Road. As I mentioned before, H has been removed. I is to consider accepting a petition for the improvement of Traumond Drive, to receive the clerk's certificate of sufficiency, to consider adoption of a preliminary assessment resolution for the proposed Traumond Drive improvements, and fix the date of July 19th, 2021, for a public hearing. This was a situation where the neighborhood residents came before us about a year and a half ago and requested that we do this, and we're going to share the costs with them for the, bringing that road up to city standards and taking it over in the city's maintenance program for the streets. Item J is to consider approving budget amendment to increase the overall budget of the occupancy tax fund. We actually received more money during the current fiscal year than we anticipated, and so we're happy to have that increase that we can appropriate to our general fund, the Civic Center Fund, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau Fund. Item K is to receive and concur with the fiscal 2122 recommended budget for the Statesville Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is in receipts and expenditures of $200,000. Item L is to consider approving a resolution supporting the continuation of a natural, of natural gas as a sustainable energy source, and authorize the mayor to sign a non-binding memorandum of understanding. Item M is to consider entering into a purchase agreement with Irohle Statesville School District for property located at 1399 and 1400 Rain Court. And item N is to appoint C. David Pope Jr. to the ABC Board for a three-year term. Any of these which we need to remove? Not as our motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Stafford. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First item on the regular agenda is to consider passing second reading of a contingent, conditional rezoning request, ZC 21-07, filed by True Homes for property along Amity Hill Road and White's Mill Road, and it's to rezone from RA, R8MF and R15M to R8MF Conditional Zoning Cluster Subdivision. Mrs. Ashley, and I will, in addition to what you have in your packets, we received from Mrs. Ashley, the DOT, TIA, and the staff's comments, and we also received an email this afternoon, Mr. Nelson, representing some of the homeowners out there, at 3:19 PM, with a conversation about his concerns about the project and also about the TIA report, which I think staff must have sent him for him to look over. Thank you, Mrs. Ashley.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is the second reading for the Larkin-Front Nine proposed subdivision, and this property is adjacent to the existing Larkin subdivision and golf course off Amity Hill Road. It's 157 acres that we've talked about in the past, and it has a total of 380 residential units. It's a mix of duplexes, apartments, and single-family homes, and open space with greenway dedication to the city, over 7,000 linear feet of greenway dedication. At the last meeting, there were concerns expressed, or last couple meetings, about cemetery, about electric lines, and about traffic, transportation improvements. And I think at the last meeting, we addressed the electric, I mean, the developer does have to work with Duke Energy to relocate or bury lines. If they cannot do that, the lots along those easements would not be allowed to construct homes on them. We're not allowing them to be subdivided into single-family lots. The developer is aware of that, and they are working with Duke Energy for those electric lines. In regards to cemetery, the developer, my understanding, has talked to previous owners, adjacent owners, talked to sellers, looked at documents, recorded documents available. They've also had a surveyor go out and physically see if they could find grave sites on the property. If you look in your packet, the reason the property line is shown as it is was because of areas where possible graveside or the chapel was located, and the developer's proposing not to disturb that area, with the exception of putting in the greenway over the existing roadbed. By doing that, it also gives access to the cemetery located to the north of the property, the Walker Family Cemetery. So I think they have addressed that. The other issue was the traffic impact analysis, and staff did give you a report today after having conversations with NCDOT and the developer. Some things that they're considering are the intersection of US 21, NC 115, Amity Hill Road, doing some improvements to that, or pay in fee in lieu of, and staff, engineering, and DOT are all in agreement on that particular item. So that'll either be installed at a certain time of the development, or fee in lieu of paid. Also talked about turn lanes, lengthening lanes, working through that. Also, possibility of a signal at the northbound I-77 ramps, but that is based on a signal warrant study. So the developer will have to provide that study. If it does not warrant a signal, then it would not be required. If it does, then it will. Most of that's laneage. We talked about White's Mill Road. That's going to be their second entrance, second way in and out for these 380 lots. That currently is a substandard road maintained by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. That was not recommended in the TIA to be upgraded or improved, but NCDOT will require that as part of the driveway permit. So of course, the city would like to see, you know, our standards curb and gutter and sidewalk, that's going to be dependent on whether there's right-of-way, and it is an extreme amount of length to ask the developer to do. So you see all the road improvements before you. The developers pretty much agreed to that contingent upon the signal warrant study, and also those improvements to White's Mill. At a minimum, it would be upgraded in width per NCDOT standards. And the details would be worked out when the, if this rezoning is approved, when they come in for their detailed site plan at TRC, that's when we would have the details on what improvements with the TIA and the others that we've stated in our approval. So our recommendation would be to basically approve as presented with the conditions that you have before you, and that is with the area around the chapel being undisturbed. That includes graded except for the greenway over the existing roadbed for the portion of the trail, and also the conditions in that road improvements will be installed per the TIA as agreed to by Planning, Engineering, and NCDOT. And I'll be happy to answer any questions for you. There's also representatives, including Andrew McDonald here tonight for Larkin, so I'll just open it up if you have any further questions.
Ms. Ashley, what, what additional road improvements and all the TIA stuff have the developers agreed to do in addition to what was required by the DOT and the TIA?
My understanding is they have agreed to the recommendations by NCDOT, and the caveat to that is whether the signal warrant study determines whether that signal's necessary or not. So I can't guarantee at this time that there will be a signal at the I-77 northbound ramps. That's per the warrant study that the developer has to do. They have committed to doing that. It's my understanding, they probably do not want to have to do the curb and gutter for extended amount of length on White's Mill Road, but they are willing to upgrade it to NCDOT standard as far as width in the pavement. All the other things that I think they have agreed to.
And did you get a chance to read the thing that we received today about golf carts crossing the street and all that kind of stuff?
The TIA does not normally get involved whether you're going to have golf cart crossings or not. These are not going to be NCDOT streets internally. These are not going to be NCDOT streets internally. That's up to the developer. If they want to have those crossings, then they would be at grade, and our engineering department would take a look at those.
So all, all the, the things that Mr. Nelson referred to today are golf carts that are crossing streets within the subdivision?
Right. I think his, he wants to see them.
Not any of the DOT streets that are outside?
Correct. They're on the new interior streets.
Sorry, Councilor, the questions, anybody have?
Can I just run down this list here? And I just want to make sure that I understand everything. On White's Mill Road, we're not going to ask you to put curb and gutter, and I'm okay with that for the reasons I expressed earlier. I totally understand that. But the developer is going to widen White's Mill Road to the DOT standards?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, if I'm headed south on Amity Hill Road, they're going to have, and I approach the entrance to this development, they're going to have a hundred-foot-long left-hand turn lane that I can get out of the way of other traffic headed south, set and execute a left-hand turn into this development. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. If I approach it from the south, they're going to have a hundred-foot right-hand turn lane where I can get out of the road and traffic can continue to progress north, and I'll be out of their way and execute a right-hand turn into their development.
That's what NCDOT is recommending.
Okay. And I'll ask this of the developer, if I'm permitted. The conditions that I've listed here, you gentlemen are in total agreement with this and agree to do these improvements. Is that right?
Okay.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Sure. If, if a recommendation comes from DOT, but not a requirement, then is that a discussion between you and the developer? But if the developer says they do not want to do it, is there any force you have to say that it must be done? If it's only a recommendation and not a requirement?
If it's a recommendation by DOT and planning and engineering agree to it, and the developer doesn't want to do it, we would come to this board to make that ultimate decision.
So that would come back before this board?
Yes.
Okay. And then, on the site plan, as, as I look at it, we've got the housing lots that are six thousand square feet. Now, is the six thousand square foot not a minimum lot size for the entire subdivision, obviously? Correct?
Not when you're doing the multifamily. That's got a different calculation.
So those lots are, sixty lots are at seven hundred and four square feet? Is that correct?
I would have to go back and look at that.
Okay. As the plans, as I can see it, sixty lots are sixteen by forty-four. So seven hundred and four square feet are those lots. And then forty-eight lots are at thirteen forty-four, the duplex lots?
And I'm not looking at those dimensions on those. I should have brought those plans, if I, if I would have known, I could have. I mean, I can look that up for you if you need me to.
Okay. I'm just wondering how that works into the zoning of the minimum lot size being six thousand? How do you do, find that calculation when you've got sixty that are only seven hundred and four square feet?
Now, they can go below that, you know, there are eight, and they can go down to six, but that difference has got to go to the open space, and it's calculated different for multifamily than it is single-family lots. I'd have to go back and look at that calculation.
All right. Because that, but you're, you're saying to us that they have met, because I remember early on, there was a contention that they were slightly less than six thousand square feet on the single-family lots.
Right. That's been corrected.
But that's all been corrected, and for the multifamily and the single-family, they comply with our R8 MF Conditional zoning requirements.
That's correct.
So with that said, I'd make a motion to approve the second reading of the conditional zoning request filed by True Homes.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Morgan, second by Mr. Foster and Mrs. Allison. Further discussion?
Included in that motion, though, is the agreement, the agreement they've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And along with the conditions that were recommended by staff.
And the DOT.
And DOT.
Okay.
Anything further? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Division, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay. Passage seven to one. Thank you. All right. Item 10 is to consider eliminating the solid, residential solid waste fee of a hundred and twenty dollars per month from the tax bill and to collect that fee on the utility bills. And Ron, you, you want to make an introduction? As I told the council, I told Mr. Jap Johnson that he could, but is it okay with Ron to make the initial presentation, and then we'll turn it over to Jap for his comments on that? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a handout. I'm going to hold off on giving this out, just kind of see how the conversation goes. But I may end up sending this around. We had a request to remind everyone, the budget proposal this year included a recommendation to increase the tax rate by 3.22 cents and eliminate the solid waste fee altogether. So we've had some discussions about that, and the latest discussion centered on a request to bring the solid waste fee, or move the solid waste fee from the tax bill to the utility bill. And we've pulled together some information that you have in front of you tonight and kind of runs through what the revenues we think would look like. This is, this is actually not an exact science in that there are a lot of different codes and a lot of different variables that we would have to work out if it does go on the utility bill. But based on that, what we, what basically is estimated is that in the first year, we would have to delay it. So there'd be a delay, because there are, again, those variables and those decisions that we would have to work out. But, so, and you look, if you look at the table, we're looking at losing about two hundred and fifteen thousand. That's, that's the best guess, based on delaying it. We would add about eighty-one thousand five hundred. Again, a best guess, that would be based on the housing authority picking up at the housing authority and also not having to pay certain charges to the, to the tax collector for having it on the tax fee. And we would basically be collecting an estimated eight hundred and one thousand dollars. I've got an estimated collection rate of about eighty-five percent. Again, we've met with staff to try and identify what's, what's that number? And the best guess right now is eighty-five percent. It could be higher, it could be lower. But ultimately, what we're looking at is about eight hundred and one thousand versus about a million, million one, if we keep it on the tax bill. So that's the information that you have in front of you. What I may be sending around is, Councilman Jones asked for some information earlier today that just shows what are some other monthly bills from communities around the state, which we pulled together one time before when, when the privatization discussion came up. And then also, the number of codes that we would have to work through in the decision-making process to get it done. It can be done, but what I would ask is that, if council does choose to move in this direction, that we get, be given some time to make sure that we get it, get it done and get it done right. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
I am. I probably am the one that opened this can of worms during the budget discussion. And my, I should have been a little bit more clear. I think staff needs time to evaluate this further, the feasibility of it, the, the economics of it. Maybe look as, as you've already done with other municipalities and how they deal with it. And then, if in fact, it makes sense for the city to put this on a utility bill, then give our, our partners at the housing authority the ability to deal with this in terms of a budget that they have to, to meet, and not surprise them and not throw this on them immediately. So my recommendation, if you want to look at doing this on the utility bill, as everything else, and when I brought up looking at privatizing the, the solid waste, it was not a recommendation, it was a suggestion, a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens to look at the options. So let's do that in terms of fiscal year 2223. You know, we have now visited this, I don't know how many times. And, and I would suggest that we just leave it alone for this fiscal year as a, as a fee.
All right. Before we move forward, let me, as promised, let me, let Jap speak as to why he wanted to bring this up another time, and then we can go forward with our decision-making process.
I appreciate that, though, Mayor. Well, to start with, this has been bugging me for five years, how we have done a lone thing to the taxpayers and the citizens of Stittsville. And it's just unbelievable. This is the worst flim-flam that I can remember council doing since I've been on council. But I want to explain how we got to this point. Five years ago, we needed a million dollars to go with, for the budget. We were a million dollars short. So some of the council come up with, well, we can just charge the sanitation a fee and collect a million that way. So I asked a question then, will the housing authority pay? Ralph, Ralph Staley says, no, they're not, they're not budgeted for it. I said, neither am I, or my constituents is budgeted for it either. So I'm opposed to it. So then, I failed to ask the question, well, fifteen years before that, we, big businesses had dumpsters. We eliminated them, and Benfield Sanitation took them over. But the smaller business like downtown, we don't charge them. We don't charge them for garbage pickup. We still pick it up, but we accept fee, ninety-nine thousand a year. So that's money that we're losing, and we, we got it at ten dollars. If we was collecting from everybody, we could cut the fee down maybe to seven thousand. I mean, seven hundred, or seven dollars a month. But there's nobody on this council but William Morgan, Costia, and myself that was there whenever we flim-flam the taxpayers. So they don't know the whole story, but I think it would even be best tonight if we would go ahead and bite the bullet, because every, every year, for four years, we said we're going to do it to next year. And I think Mr. Morgan's the one that makes that statement.